Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that. I'll call our committee, the whole meeting to order here this morning, April 25th. Is there any declaration of interest on the committee, the whole meeting agenda that anyone wants to make? Seeing none, again, if one should arise during the time of the meeting, you can raise it at that time. Business arising for minutes. We have a notice of motion here from councillor Body. Councillor Body, I'll ask you to introduce it, please.
Thank you, Warden Millen. Through you, I'll make the following motion. I understand it will be seconded by councillor Keveney. I'm going to alter number two in the resolution at the end just to, well, when we get there, it's just going to shorten it down and remove a list. I tried to put as much detail into the motion as possible so people would understand where I was coming from. So whereas TC Energy has made public its plans to construct and operate a major 1,000-megawatt hydroelectric generating facility centered on zero emissions electricity generating technology known as pump storage, related works and undertakings in partnership with the Saugina-Jibway Nation on lands controlled by the Federal Department of National Defense in the municipality of Meaford in the County of Gray in the territory of the Saugina-Jibway Nation. And whereas Gray County Council has adopted the strategic plan for 2024 to 2027 called Working Together for Success, and under the heading Building Communities for the Future, recognized economic development, climate change, adaption, and First Nation reconciliation and relationship building as priorities. Whereas Gray County has declared a climate emergency and adopted Going Green and Gray Climate Change Action Plan for 2022 to 2050, the plan makes a commitment to net zero emissions by 2050 by leveraging the emerging energy innovation sector, championing, that's hard to say, local low-carbon energy leadership and centering reconciliation, climate action, given the long history of indigenous leadership environmental stewardship. And whereas Gray County has adopted an Economic Development Tourism and Culture Master Plan titled Great Reset, which provides a 10-year vision for growth of economic development, tourism and culture includes a focus on sustainability, including supporting clean energy industries and the opportunity for more diversified economy by supporting nuclear, pump storage, and hydrogen development. And whereas the Saugina-Jibway Nation has been keepers of these lands and waters throughout history, and recognizing the commitment to indigenous economic self-determination is important for advancing reconciliation, TC Energy has established a partnership with Saugina-Jibway Nation early in the development process to ensure meaningful indigenous participation and benefit. Whereas the Saugina-Jibway Nation will decide whether they will approve the project, and such approval is required for the project to proceed. I therefore, now therefore, it be resolved that council for the County of Gray hereby, one, declare conditional support for TC Energy and the Saugina-Jibway Nation proceeding with proposed Ontario Pump Storage Project, subject to the applicable approvals process, including environmental and impact assessments, and approval of the Saugina-Jibway Nation. And at number two, that the warden for the county of Gray prepare and send a letter advising this declaration to the appropriate parties. Now I'll have comments when you're ready.
Someone carry second that, please. Councillor Keveney, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Councillor Keveney?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everyone. I do request your indulgence for my remarks. I want to begin by expressing my appreciation to councillor Body for bringing this very important motion forward this morning for our consideration. I am pleased to be the seconder. Meaford, as the host community, has the advantage of four years of knowledge relating to the proposed Ontario Pump Storage Project. Our council passed a motion of conditional support on February 27th of 2023, which is also based on the environmental assessment process. Meaford will have each report peer reviewed. That information can be shared with members of county council and with county staff. Meaford has created a pump storage advisory committee with nine public members. Our first meeting will be May 9. Public engagement will be a large component of the work of this committee. I'm going to speak now to potential economic development benefits for Gray County should OPS go forward. Firstly, we recognize that Trans-Canada Energy has offered the municipality of Meaford a cash portion of future community benefits. The current number on the table is $1.5 million annually. The county's portion will be above and beyond. We will negotiate the 1.5, but that amount roughly would equate to $600,000 for the county on an annual basis. The Economic Development Tourism and Culture Master Plan speaks to being forward-thinking and future-ready, along with being innovative and entrepreneurial. I believe this project meets this mandate by proposing to supply 1,000 megawatts of clean energy to Ontario. Carlinelle from the ISO stated at an Oprah session this Tuesday that energy needs in Ontario will at least double, if not triple, over the next 20 years. She also said that an investment of $400 billion will be necessary in Ontario to meet these future demands. Our Economic Development Master Plan also speaks to a diversified economy based on clean energy. The economy of Gray will benefit with the influx of 1,000 construction jobs and the addition of many subsidiary businesses to the county. From the recently released Cancia Report outlining the economic and social benefits of this project, we learned that 83% of the capital investment for this project will remain in Canada. Of that 83%, 92% of the investment will remain in Ontario. Every lower tier has the opportunity to benefit from this growth. TCE has made a firm commitment to hire and buy locally. Two weeks ago tomorrow, a suppliers forum was held at the Sidneyham campus. Several of you were there in attendance and heard about local opportunities. Makua Kehill is the first nuclear-qualified indigenous fabricating facility and located right here in Owen Sound. We learned from their president how this local business is already benefiting from OPS. I want to add that to meet provincial, federal, and indigenous approval standards, every question and concern presented to TC Energy must be answered objectively. Public engagement will be a major component of the federal impact assessment process. I believe we will never know if this project could be good for Gray County without the next phase, which is the assessment process identified in this motion. Thank you for listening. I hope you will all join me in supporting this motion as we send it forward to encourage the minister to give TC Energy the green light to begin their federal and provincial impact assessment processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Anyone else? Councillor Body?
Ah, that button. Thank you, Warden Millen. Through you. Councillor Keveney has covered off the economic development side of things, and I want to focus on climate change reconciliation and the impact assessments that will be required. I note, here at the county, we've passed plans and policies, strategic plans, economic development plans that I referred to in the whereas is. What this really does is just confirms some of the decisions that we've already made in those plans. With regard to climate change, there are climate models out in the world that predict that the Earth's global average temperature will rise an additional four degrees Celsius during the 21st century. That's if greenhouse gas levels continue to rise as present. Canada's joined, I think it's 129 countries to aim for net zero 2050 as the plan. Gray County has declared the climate emergency, as we've noted, and adopted a plan to get to net zero by 2050 as well. As more Canadians shift to electric vehicles, install electric heat pumps in houses, more business and industries green their operations. You know, think of the massive amounts of carbon-based fossil fuel that's used for glass, that's used for steel, that's used for so many industrial processes that are going to need to be changed to electricity or to hydrogen that will require electricity to produce. We have wind, we have solar, we have nuclear, but we can't rely on them for peak demand. Presently, when operating at full capacity, nuclear plants are spilling off steam at night. They cannot upload enough electricity into the system. Then at peak times later in the afternoon, there are over 50 gas-powered generating electrical plants in Ontario that are picking up that load. Energy storage is going to be so important moving forward for reaching that net zero. Whether it be pump storage, battery, hydrogen, or other methods needed, all of them have issues. We have councillor Tom here that's focusing on battery storage. We know from attending the Graves' Agricultural Meeting a couple of weeks ago that there's concern about loss of land for battery storage. None of these, none of these are perfect, but they're all going to be needed. With regard to reconciliation, we recognize that Saugina-Jibway Nation has been keepers of these lands and waters throughout history. Our ancestors and their ancestors signed treaties recognizing that history. Section 35, the Canadian Constitution Act of 1982 recognizes and affirms the existing Aboriginal and treaty rights of indigenous peoples. To protect these rights, the duty to consult and accommodate indigenous groups was developed by Canadian courts. The Supreme Court of Canada stated that the general purpose of the duty to consult is to foster reconciliation. Supreme Court released three decisions in 2004 and 2005 that established certain procedural protections for Aboriginal and treaty rights. One of the cases establishes that the Crown has a duty to consult indigenous people when it intends to act in a manner that may adversely affect potential or establish Aboriginal treaty rights. Infrastructure Canada, which oversees projects like this and may provide grants, they have a policy that states that recognizes a commitment to indigenous economic self-determination is important for advancing reconciliation and involvement early in the development process, ensuring meaningful indigenous participation and benefit. TC Energy has engaged with the Saugina-Jibway Nation early and in a meaningful way in this project. It should be noted that Saugina-Jibway Nation have not approved the proposed project yet. They will make their own decisions and will speak for themselves. They will do their due diligence. And when they feel they are ready, their community will make the decision to support the project in their territory or not. From experience, when the city of Owen Sound was upgrading her water treatment facility, we entered into a consultation, consulting agreement with the Saugina-Jibway Nation. When we were looking at Harper divestiture, we did so with both chiefs involved. We relied on the Saugina-Jibway Nation's commitment to protecting the waters and the habitat and their expertise with environmental issues. The results for the city of Owen Sound in both matters are better as a result of consulting and working with the Saugina-Jibway Nation. I encourage everyone to respect and support Saugina-Jibway Nation's decision-making process and the final decision they come to. Now, I note there still has to be some big impact assessments. We've received a lot of correspondence in the last couple of days. We received more at the city of Owen Sound a couple of weeks ago when we looked at this. The questions raised in those, in that correspondence have to be answered in the process. There's legitimate questions there. However, I don't agree with opposing the project prior to the completion of the required assessments. The Ontario Pump Storage Project will have to undergo an impact assessment, which will be done by the Impact Assessment Agency of Canada. So it's not being done by TC Energy, it's being done by a government agency. Expert federal and provincial departments and ministries will be part of it to ensure that accurate and reliable data and the appropriate expertise is available. This will include the Department of National Defense and the training center's lands. In addition, the project will be subject to two class environmental assessments under the Ontario Ministry of Environment for project facilities located off the training center. Both processes will allow for transparent disclosures and scientific testing of information regarding the potential impacts associated with the project and the proposed mitigation the project will undertake to address those impacts. I understand that the impact assessment process is going to start later this year and will take approximately three years. It will provide numerous opportunities for the project team, federal, provincial agencies to share information and receive feedback from interested parties and indigenous nations. I note, all interested parties will have the opportunity to engage directly with the regulator to voice concerns, questions, and request clarification. That is the proper place for scientific input and rigorous review. That's the place for those who are opposed, that have concerns and questions. That's the place for them to be heard and to make their presentation. So in conclusion, there's still a lot of decisions to be made by the Saugina-Jibway Nation, by TC Energy, by our provincial government ministries and agencies before this project gets final approval. And I go back to that first paragraph. Four degree Celsius. Worldwide temperature increase. Think about the effect on our children or grandchildren. Think about the effect on food growing. Where can grow? What can be grown? Arids, lands, et cetera. Think of what we need to do to get there. So to get to net zero, there's going to have to be bold and very unpopular decisions that have to be made. Not everyone's going to like those decisions. They have to be made. They have to take place. There's always going to be a community that says they don't want it in their territory, in their yard. We have to make bold decisions. We have to be willing to say, yeah, in our backyard. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Anyone else have any comments, questions? Councillor Debrin?
Thank you through you, Warden, and good morning, county council. I appreciate the dialogue that we're having at this table. I appreciate that Meaford is engaging its own consultant for all peer reviews that will peer review all the studies. And I definitely appreciate that this is conditional and what that means. I want to make my decision based on the science, and in order for us to have the me personally, to have the adequate information, those studies need to be done. And if the process is going to be halted and we don't get that information, then we don't get the opportunity to make an informed decision, one way or the other. I would, however, appreciate the addition, an additional clause after the first one that clearly states that conditional support may be revoked at any time for any reason at county council's discretion. If I could put that amendment on the floor, Mr. Warden?
Thank you. Is there a secondary for that amendment? Councillor Matrasos, thank you. Discussion on the amendment itself. Seeing none, I'll call the vote on the amendment to add that clause. I believe it's been up on the screen. Not yet. Okay, but I think it's fairly clear. All right. Sorry, go. Okay, please, councillor Debrin, if you would read that again.
And I apologize to staff. I just that a second clause after the first of the now therefore be it resolved section, that conditional support may be revoked at any time for any reason at county council's discretion.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Everyone's clear? Councillor Body?
Thank you, Warden Millen. Through you. Council can rescind any decision anytime. This isn't necessary.
Okay, thank you. Agreed. Any further discussion on the amendment? Councillor Nielsen?
Thank you, Warden Millen. Just a question of process. Having a clause in there, you would require two-thirds majority to bring a motion back for discussion. Having this clause in there, does that remove that necessary for the two-thirds to bring back and reconsider a motion?
Now you're asking stuff above my pay grade. I don't know. Madam Clerk, where would you go on that one?
Sorry, councillor Nielsen, just by make sure I fully understand, could you repeat the question?
Absolutely, Clerk Water. My question is, having a clause like this put into the motion, does it prevent the need for a two-thirds majority to bring a resolution back for rediscussion? So my understanding of policy is if it's passed, we need to reconsider the motion. But having this clause is, is prevent the need for the reconsideration motion?
No, I would suggest that if that a motion to reconsider would need to come back to council despite this clause being in there.
Thank you, Chair. Any further discussion on the amendment? Councillor Debrin?
Thank you, Warden Millen. And I just want to clarify that this is just to make it clear for all concerned that what the condition, conditional support means to us at the table. I realize that any resolution, any decision that county council makes can be withdrawn or rescinded or changed at any time, and this is going to be coming back to council at some point in the future to either withdraw the conditional support or firm up our support based on the studies and the science that is presented. So it's going to come back to county council regardless. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? I'll call the vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That amendment fails. So now we're back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any. I'll call the question. All those in favor? A recorded vote has been called. Madam Clerk, would you take the recorded vote, please?
Councillor Mackey? In favor, councillor McKay? Councillor Carlton? In favor, councillor Pringle? In favor, councillor Allwood? In favor, councillor Nielsen? In favor, councillor Patterson? In favor, councillor Dickert? In favor, councillor Kentner? In favor, councillor Keveney? In favor, councillor Body? In favor, councillor Greg? In favor, Warden Millen?
In favor.
In favor, councillor Debrin? In favor, councillor Matrasos? In favor, councillor Boardingell?
Opposed.
Opposed, councillor Echols? In favor, councillor Hutchinson? In favor, that motion is carried 89 to 7.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, moving on, we have no delegations this morning. We have the consent agenda has been provided there for your appraisal. Would anyone like any of those items removed for further discussion? Councillor Debrin?
Thank you, Warden Millen, and I would like to pull the 6A and 6B for discussion.
Okay, thank you. We'll deal with those later in the agenda. Any further requests for removal of consent items? Okay, if I could have a motion to adopt the recommendations of the remaining councillor Carlton, councillor Patterson, any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving on to items for direction and discussion, first is a report regarding the Beaver Valley Sustainable Tourism Strategy Project Partner MOU. That's a mouthful. Morning, Randy. You'll be giving this report. The floor is yours, sir.
Sorry, just clarified, have we moved the motion? Sorry.
My apologies. We need a mover and secondary. Councillor Dickert and councillor Keveney, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And good morning, county council. So I'm presenting this report on behalf of Savannah, who is currently off. One of the, I think Michelle Harris is on the line. I do see her name up there. So she's the director of building economic community development for Gray Highlands. She's joined through Zoom today to help answer any questions that council may have. So this report is a follow-up report to a report that was presented to council back in the fall of last year. Council may recall that this was regarding the Beaver Valley Sustainability Tourism Strategy, which the strategy was approved by council, but at that time deferred proceeding with the memorandum of understanding until such time as the other partners supported the strategy and proceeding with the MOU. And council also deferred part of the original recommendation regarding any potential financial commitments pending budget deliberations. So following the report to county council, both Gray Highlands Council, as well as the Town of the Mountains Council, which are partners to this, this project, as well as RTO 7, approved the strategy in November and supported proceeding with the development of the MOU, as well as supporting any financial contributions for annual budget considerations. Project partners have continued to meet monthly. They're to share information and to discuss possible next steps as it relates to this initiative. There's two key priority actions that have come out of the discussions to date. The first is that the project partners, as well as the Destination Stewardship Corps group, held their inaugural meeting to share updates with each other and to better understand the roles and potential future collaboration as it relates to sustainable tourism strategies within the Beaver Valley area. Project partners also discussed and built consensus around suggested content for the project partner MOU. So the proposed MOU has been developed by the partners as outlined in the report for council's consideration. It should be noted that while the strategy sets out the project goals and tactics, the MOU outlines guiding principles and will help to guide the work of the partners, as well as the implementation of the strategy. The MOU does recognize that there's many stakeholders that are involved in tourism initiatives throughout the Beaver Valley area, as well as the emergence of a number of related tourism initiatives. As such, the strategy and the actions in the strategy focus on recommendations that can be tackled by the project partners in order to move forward with the larger vision for sustainable tourism development in this area, while respecting and being informed by those other initiatives that are being done by some other stakeholders in Beaver Valley area. So staff are seeking council's endorsement of the proposed draft content of the MOU, which has received the consensus amongst the other project partners. Following council endorsement of this report, project partners will finalize the draft MOU for signature by the project partners' warden in this, in our case, as well as the mayor's and CAO from RTO 7. Staff will also work with clerks to determine the best approach for a joint meeting of the project partner reps, as well as a corresponding public meeting for public comment. Partners will continue to meet monthly to prioritize next steps. I understand that they had a recent meeting to talk about potential work plane items. And will also meet with Destination Stewardship Corps members to continue discussions and look for opportunities to collaborate. So at this stage, there's no financial commitments associated with the implementation of the strategy, the MOU. If there are any in the future, we'll of course bring those forward for council's consideration as part of the budget process. So at this stage, staff recommend the report be received, that direction be provided to proceed with next steps to formalize the MOU, and that any financial commitments associated with the MOU or the strategy be included as part of any future budget process for council's consideration. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Randy. Are there any questions? Not seeing any. I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Randy. The next report is regarding ecological offsetting policy. That is going to be presented by Randy, or Scott, rather. Randy's already been here. Morning, Scott. I'll just get a mover and secondary here first to receive councillor Pringle and councillor McKay. Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and good warning, Warden and members of county council. I'm actually just up here to make an introduction because I think some of these faces might be new to county council. All the heavy lifting on this report was done by Michael Cook and Natalie Matalco. You are here to present the report. You may have met Natalie before. She was our former Trails and Forestry Coordinator, but now both Michael and Natalie are planning ecologists. And council may remember, these were the changes that were made by the province last year, and the county picked up planning ecology on behalf of both the county and our member municipalities, and Natalie and Michael have been working for the last number of months to find their feet and to be commenting on development proposals and applications. And what you have before you today is helping to get some of that further framework potentially in place to guide their work. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michael and Natalie.
Great. Good to meet you all. Um, good afternoon, County Council, and I think it's still morning time, but through the warden today, Natalie and I were speaking about ecological offsetting policy here at Gray County. So a bit of background, consultation with residents and visitors show that natural areas that were of high value within Gray County, protection and enhancement of these features is broadly supported. Recent legislative changes affecting the review and approval authority for natural heritage policies has changed roles from the conservation authorities to the county. And this makes natural heritage review and approvals somewhat challenging as natural heritage policies and guidelines are not fully developed here at the county as they were at the conservation authorities, such as an ecological offsetting policy. Offsetting has been utilized informally for years by environmental planners and ecologists and other organizations responsible for natural heritage review and approvals. Other entities such as some conservation authorities, municipalities like Barry, counties like Peterborough, have developed offsetting policies and procedures to support development proposals and process requests for offsetting. To explore additional offsetting options for natural heritage review, uh the County Official Plan Amendment eleven added offsetting wording to section seven of Recolor Gray, uh the Gray County Official Plan. This policy wording outlines that the county can consider and generally support offsetting policies developed by other entities within the county. With the county now responsible for natural heritage review and approvals for itself and its member municipalities, it may be an appropriate time for us to develop our own formal offsetting calls.
So what is ecological offsetting? It's where environmental or ecological impacts are incurred in one area, such as the removal of woodlands and compensated for in another area, such as replanting woodlands on the same site that they were removed or another property. It aims to achieve no net loss and promote overall net gains within the broader ecosystem whereby a feature is compensated for equal or greater ecological value. It's considered the last step under the mitigation hierarchy of avoid, minimize, mitigate, and then offset. Offsetting is not used to justify the removal of features, and it's not considered for some features due to their significance or sensitivity, such as provincially significant wetlands or sensitive wetland types like bogs and fens. There are instances where the province uses ecological offsetting, and one example would be the permitting process to remove a butternut tree, which is an endangered species in exchange for planting butternut trees elsewhere.
So purpose of an ecological offsetting policy is develop standardized criteria for offsetting proposals. We are seeking to establish consistent defensible policy that will be critical to successful implementation and public support for this type of work. Natural features will be assigned standardized monetary values based on their ecological sensitivity, natural functions, ecosystem services, as well as social, cultural, and economic values being impacted through natural heritage removals. For example, if the offsetting proposals to remove a portion of significant woodland or other wetland feature, the monetary value for the reestablishment of this feature will generally increase if the feature is more ecologically sensitive, provides high-value ecosystem services and functions, or may have impacts on social values such as recreation. The development of an offsetting policy can result in cash and lieu processes, a purely developer-driven and financed process, a third party conducting offsetting works on behalf of the developer or county, um such as Ducks Unlimited Canada or conservation authorities who are familiar with this type of work. All the different policy options for administering offsetting can be explored when researching and developing what may be the most appropriate offsetting processes for Gray County. Gray County would also not be the first to implement an offsetting policy within the county's borders. I'll say Nottawa Sega Valley Conservation Authority has an existing offsetting policy that is currently being utilized in the county. And it's conducting conducted using standardized criteria, metrics, and can be used to fulfill the requirements of their regulation and of the Conservation Authorities Act.
So on the slide, there are two examples of wetland creation projects. The one on the left is a nutrient management pond that was constructed by Ducks Unlimited. And the other one on the right is a wetland project by a Savile Bay Field Conservation. Both of these wetlands, they function alongside productive agricultural fields, and they demonstrate the ability to create wetlands um in proximity to other land use types as a potential offsetting project. Um, it is important to note, though, that an offsetting policy is not meant to take quality productive farmland out of production in exchange for allowing development in settlement areas.
So when would offsetting be considered? Uh, offsetting is commonly used for larger development applications such as subdivisioning condominium proposals. These types of applications take up a larger area, and as such, natural features are commonly proposed for removal through the development process. Similar proposals for new and expanded licenses for aggregate extraction under the Aggregate Resources Act may also be considered for offsetting. Uh, similar to subdivisions, these applications frequently require removal of natural features to access the most amount of extractable area. Offsetting is generally not utilized or requested for smaller proposals such as minor exemption or minor variance applications. Sometimes offsetting cannot be considered due to scenarios where provincial and federal legislation would not be supportive, such as offsetting fish habitat, which would need approval from the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, Canada, uh or habitat of endangered and threatened species, which would need Ministry of Environment, Conservation, and Parks approval, similar to the butternut offsetting. As a right permissions through zoning bylaw are also not usually subject to offsetting.
So impacts uh to natural heritage features are usually inevitable for larger developments such as subdivisions and gravel pits. And there are some opportunities that come with offsetting. It provides a means for features to be removed and reestablished in more appropriate areas for long-term protection and overall enhancement. It aims to achieve conservation gains by integrating environmental and social costs of biodiversity loss and planning decisions. It would also set out clear requirements for developers through the planning process. It would improve application review processes for natural heritage protection considerations. And lastly, it supports corporate goals in climate action, healthy communities, and forest management.
So some challenges with ecological offsetting are some features cannot be offset due to their high sensitivity, rarity, and functionality. A good example of this is significant valley lands where some features of importance not be fully offset appropriately and should not be considered for offsetting due to the risk of not being able to recreate a similar ecosystem type. If offsetting works are poorly completed, not monitored, or not enforced, this may seem like a way to undermine existing natural heritage protection policies. Although the provincial government has not stated that planning authorities cannot use offsetting as a tool, they also don't have any formal policies or standard approach to how offsetting should be conducted in Ontario. A common challenge with offsetting pros uh projects are also finding the lands that can accommodate the creation of such a feature like woodland or wetland. The lands must be able to support the specific kind of feature being offset. A general rule is to strive to have the offset feature created as close as possible to where the original feature was removed, preferably on the same parcel proposed for development uh and as soon as possible. Offsetting generally has mixed outlooks on its effectiveness and potential impacts, not only to natural features and the environment, but also social, economic, and cultural values of the public and indigenous communities. Offsetting policies may increase administrative workload of the county with the the potential requirement for ongoing monitoring and potential maintenance responsibility post-development. What is currently an informal offsetting process would become a formal offsetting policy. This could be seen as setting restrictions and increasing specific requirements for developers who want to remove natural heritage features to accommodate their proposed development.
As mentioned a few slides back, offsetting aligns with county strategic goals and would serve as a tool to further support the county's environmental and stewardship efforts. For example, some of the goals of the Climate Change Action Plan speak to the retention of features, enhancing natural assets, and restoration of degraded systems across Gray County.
So next steps for us are we're seeking direction from council to proceed with consultation and work towards drafting an offsetting policy and procedure to support natural heritage review and approvals mandated under the provincial policy statement, county, and local official plans. Staff believe this policy could aid in their review and provide clear guidance to developers who may need to propose natural heritage feature removals through the development process. Currently, natural heritage features are proposed for removal without the need for offsetting, resulting in losses of natural cover and degradation of our existing natural heritage system, with essentially no option to ask for feature reestablishment. Offsetting is generally only applied in certain situations and may not be applicable to certain proposals. Staff seek to explore when offsetting is most appropriate and when it should not be considered. Staff also plan to initiate consultation with other organizations and stakeholders to address any outstanding concerns for Gray County implementing an offsetting policy and procedural guidance. Staff will then return to council to present the potential offsetting policy and procedure options for consideration at a later date.
Staff's recommendation today is that this report regarding the development of an ecological offsetting be received and that staff be directed to develop an ecological offsetting policy for county council's consideration, following the consultation with member municipalities, conservation authorities, indigenous communities, the building and development industry, the Niagara Startman Commission, and the public. And that brings us to the end of our presentation. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael and Natalie. Very well done. Any questions for the presenters? Counselor DeBreen?
Thank you, Warden Milne. Thank you, Mike and Natalie. Hi, Mike. Mike came from Sogging Valley Conservation Authority. So I just want to thank you for the presentation, and I in in the report, it referred to or referenced a recent offsetting project that was voluntary. And I just wanted to uh clarify that my understanding is that this policy will make your job easier and expedite those types of approval processes where if a proponent, an applicant is looking to clear some trees on one farm parcel, and they voluntarily ask to plant trees to offset that, you would then be able to follow the policy and it would be more streamlined and quicker for that applicant. Is that correct?
Just use the mic. Just put the microphone on there, please.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's exactly what we're trying to do here. It's create a more formal standardized process for people who want to remove natural features and they can reestablish them somewhere else. So more clear guidance for the developer as well as their guidance for us to process these requests.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Dickert?
Thank you, Warden, and thank you for the presentation. Just wondering if having a policy like this in place, does that create an opportunity for developers to if we approve at one place, are we setting precedent and what? What's being built into it so that we can actually control where we do allow it and don't allow it?
Through you, Warden. Uh, mainly, offsetting is not the first choice, right? But Natalie discussed, first, we want to try to avoid these removals and minimize if possible uh and then mitigate if possible. So if they're removing, what can they do to make this right and mitigate the outstanding concerns with feature removal? The very last kind of auction is, you know, if there's no room for any of those first three to happen, then they can remove the feature and offset it with a similar feature as well. It could set precedents, like you said, um but there are already established offsetting policies. Uh, we wouldn't be the first one. I know Nottawa Sega Valley Conservation has one that has been utilized in the Blue Mountains area before. So I don't think it would be a farm. Um, and there are a lot of different standardized ecological offsetting procedures that we could follow suit with potentially.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Warden. Thanks for the presentation. Just wondering if there has been any consultation to this point with the agricultural community and is there any expected unforeseen restrictions placed on normal agricultural practices through this?
If you want, I see Scott Taylor back there waving his arms. Scott, are you wanting to go to lunch or you you? Sorry, go ahead, Scott.
Yes, lunch would be great. Thank you, Mr. Warden. No, I thank you for your question. Um. Counselor, i- in this case, we haven't engaged with the agriculture community yet. Certainly, we would we would engage as as part of that next process. But I think just to loop back to what Michael and Natalie have shared as part of their presentation is this isn't meant for the uh smaller one-off projects. This is largely the bigger development. So, you know, i- if someone is proposing a minor variance and they need a side yard setback, this isn't where we'd use it. We would use this more at the subdivision and 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 gravel pit stage, so to speak. With respect to how that would impact agriculture, if you have an existing farm and and you have the existing zoning to build a barn or a drive shed or anything else, no one's taking that away through this process. Um, the only place it it might inform future agricultural um uh land clearing in that regard would be if we developed a policy and then as part of our review of the county's Forest Management Bylaw, we built in uh criteria uh within that bylaw that looked at at clearing opportunities. So that bylaw is under review yet, but it is under review now, but hasn't come back to council. So I think not only would would this ecological offsetting policy potentially inform planning development applications, but it might feed into the review of the county's Forest Management Bylaw, and that's where part of that bylaw, or not part of that bylaw, that bylaw, we've already committed to taking that back through the Agricultural Advisory Committee, and I think it'd probably be appropriate to to take a presentation on ecological offsetting once we have some more principles considered back through that committee as well.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Good. Any other questions? Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Uh, and maybe you touched on it, but if there is a dispute from the applicant or developer, what's the process?
Through you, Warden. Uh, usually, these applications come in with what's called an environmental impact assessment as well. So sometimes the consultant hired by the developer will propose different types of ecological offsetting, different offset ratios. How much do you have to, you know, reestablish versus what you removed? Um, so it's not always up to us to determine that. Sometimes it is provided by the developer and their consultant themselves, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Michael and Natalie. Okay, it is eleven o'clock. Does council want to recess for ten minutes? I'm seeing a few heads nodding. All right, let's recess. We'll reconvene at eleven ten. Thank you, Rob, for firing up the machine there again. Um there's been a request here to deal with the two pulled items. The consent items first, is anybody adamantly opposed to doing that? Just. So we can, all right, so let's deal with the first one, six A correspondence from township or the town of Godrich. Uh regarding phase out of free well water testing. Counselor DeBreen. You'll move that, will you? Yes, thank you. Is there a secondary? Counselor McKay, thank you. Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden Millen, and thank you, County Council. The resolution is fine as it is written. I did want to pull it for discussion to provide an update that as a result of the correspondence. From the drinking water source protection, other conservation authorities, Southgate's resolution possibly, and the town of Godrich, among others. That have maybe not hit our council agenda. Minister Jones has um given an update, the Health Minister Sylvia Jones. At Queen's Park this week, we will continue to test the well water in the province of Ontario. We have had it for decades. I grew up with it. It is a system that many of us understand the value and importance of in rural Ontario because we lived in every single way. We lived it every single day. We're going to continue that process, Jones told the House. So. In relation to the two items six A that we have on the floor right now. Uh we can still certainly share our support and 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 show the minister that we too at the county believe this is important, or we could simply receive for information given. The outcome, but I uh will leave the resolution stand as is. Thank you, Warden.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Let the minutes reflect that the warden was right and the and the clerk was mistaken, so. It'll one and only time that'll ever happen. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Uh six B correspondence. Uh Counselor DeBreen, you want to move that as well?
Thank you, Warden. Yes, as is. Thank you.
All right, is there a secondary? Counselor uh Nielsen, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, wait, Counselor DeBreen, you want to? No, okay, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, um. The next report for discussion is the uh. Report on the Rockwood Terrace redevelopment tender award. CAO. Wingrove will be giving that report. Do I have a mover for that, please? Counselor Hutchison, seconded by. Counselor Carlton. Kim, floor is yours now.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, council. Um well, uh I just wanted to say before I begin that while Mary Lou and I developed this particular. Uh report, this project uh would not be where it is without the tremendous efforts of of Jennifer Cornell and her team to move the design forward. And um Randy's expertise regarding the site works and servicing and all the many, many details that go into that. So this really has been a a team effort. And we're, I think we're all so pleased to be where we are today. So just by way of a little bit of background here, um the province approved in principle this project to move forward back in September of of twenty nineteen. That's where um we were told that we would be able to uh increase the number of beds in the facility from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-eight. Um in twenty twenty, uh the county acquired the thirty acre parcel. Um where the new home is being built. And in twenty twenty-one, we retained Collier's project leaders to be our project manager. And later that year appointed Kasey and Architects and Ted Handy and Associates as our prime consultants. So just a refresher here, the here is the project site. So you can see the existing Rockwood Terrace in Durham outlined in red. And then um to the south of that, the thirty acre parcel, the ten acres that is the new long-term care home site. Um bounded by blue, though the blue lines are the extension of Rock Street and South Street that are taking place as a result of this project. And then um. To the. Uh direction, am I going to the west? The twenty acres of vacant property that. Um at some point in the future, we'll have some discussions about um how that property um might best be used. Please, thank you. I knew. Um what you're seeing on the screen right now is a drone footage. Um this is the the site uh that you can see that some really extensive early works have taken place on the site. Um as you um. Look there, you'll see that's the Durham Curling Club, the blue building at the top of the screen. Um you can also see, I guess, if you if you look uh to the right-hand side of of this image. You see one of the the storm with the smaller of the two stormwater ponds is that depression there um at the road. This is just another quick shot, but that gives you a sense that's the Rock Street looking towards um where you would come to the existing Rockwood Terrace. It just gives you a sense kind of the scope of the of the work that's taken place there. This is the rendering of on the front facade of the new building. And I would just remind anyone, if you go to gray.ca and you type in redevelopment on the search bar, that will take you to um. A lot of information about what's going on with the project, the drone footage, um a lot of detailed information about various aspects of the new home, things like. Um what we're considering for infection prevention and control and and that sort of thing. So a great resource if you're looking for more information. So what we're here today to discuss is um the general contractor uh tender award. And this is a bit of a unique process, and so I wanted to kind of go through the steps with you. Um the steps in selecting and awarding the general contractor contract are. Prequalification, the submission of tender bids by the interested uh and qualified companies. Um and evaluation for compliance and pricing. Where we are today, which is um seeking council's recommendation uh to the Ministry of Long-Term Care of a successful proponent. Um the Ministry of Long-Term Care then confirms um that they accept our recommendation of the of the company to move forward with. And then at that point, the the county would formally award um the contract to construct to the successful bidder. The prequalification process um took place last fall. And it was a very extensive evaluation of each of the interested firms' reputation, qualifications, and ability to successfully complete. The construction project. And this evaluation was undertaken by Colliers and Kasey and and Handys and some of their um specialist firms that that they're working with. The prequalification involved both mandatory criteria as well as rated criteria. The mandatory things each firm had to demonstrate included um not having any pending litigation, having the appropriate um. WSIB coverage, appropriate insurance, um ability to bond. Uh no, ensuring that there have no conflict of interest and that they haven't. Now or in the past, um been convicted of any kind of fraud. Then the rated criteria includes their corporate history, their project experience, references, who their key team members are and and what their expertise is. Their project management skills um and the quality and safety of past projects that they were completed. So they were um required to demonstrate in some detail. Where they were with each and one of those things, those were rated, and you had to attain a minimum score on the rate of rated criteria of at least seventy percent to be able to. Uh move forward in the project. And we did have four firms who were successfully prequalified. Of those four firms that we were prequalified to bid. Um we released a tender on um February first that closed on April fifth. Throughout that process, um two of our four bidders did withdraw citing um other projects that they'd taken on and and which removed their ability to uh. Have the sufficient sufficient capacity to take on this project. Um but from the two bids that we did receive, they were evaluated evaluated, I said, as I say, by Colliers, Kasey and Handy, et cetera, the specialist firms for their compliance. And also then for the bid amount, and the lowest bid was received from Muleal Blaney. Um for fifty-nine point two million dollars, and that's excluding HST. So as I mentioned earlier, where we are um with the timeline. Um council ret today, if you're supportive, will recommend the general contractor to the province. And then what we do is put together um with Colliers a package called Approval to Construct. And that's um where there's a number of pieces of information that have to go back to the province, our recommendation, um information about um the bonding and the insurance of the successful bidder. Um the building permit, et cetera. So all of that information comes together, it goes to a package, in a package to the province, and they evaluate that and then um come back to us with a decision. We anticipate, given information that they've provided to us, that they should be able to turn around that decision. Two to three weeks um because of all of the work that's gone into this so far. Um once we have that, then and we can formally award, then there'll be a project kickoff meeting with. then there'll be a project kickoff meeting with Colliers, with the architects and staff and Moleo Blaney, uh, at the end of May. And then I, I think after that, we'll have, um, a long-term care redevelopment task force meeting to bring everybody up to speed and talk about, um, where, what, uh, information was shared at the project kickoff meeting. With everything in order, then we would be ready to mobilize the project on site in, in mid-June. And based on the information that Moleo provided to us, um, we accept, we expect to have the project completed in January of twenty twenty-seven. So moving on from timing to costs, so the project costs breakdown, and you've seen this breakdown, um, in the past. Um, I'm showing here both the earlier estimate that was from, um, the earlier in twenty twenty-three and where we are today. Um, we've got, you know, four baskets of costs, if you will. Hard construction is not only the cost of the general contractor and the construction of the building itself, but also includes all of the utilities, all of the early works that you saw earlier, putting in all of those roads. The extensive amount of landscaping that will be required after the building is built. So there's an awful lot of pieces that go into hard construction. Soft costs, our project management, the architects, and all of the other specialist surveys and assessments that were done prior to, uh, getting to this point. Um, all of the legal work that's happened on the file and the cost of the building permit. Other construction costs are pri- are primarily the furniture fixtures and equipment that will go into the new home. And then, uh, as you know, with all of our projects, um, there's a, what we call the non-recoverable portion of the HST um, that the county will be responsible for. So that takes us, um, we were at ninety-six, six, we believe now that we're at around ninety-one million, so that's a very, uh, positive news. This variance of about five point eight million dollars is about five point eight percent less than where we were in twenty twenty-three, but I think we're seeing that across a number of the tenders that we've let, that things have settled a wee bit, um, from, from where we were originally, um, in, in the, in the pandemic. All of this, though, kind of is, is, has a caveat around it, that this is such a big project. And it's two, you know, we'll be in this for two more years. Um, it would need to be carefully managed, which is why we have the people around us that we do, the various consultants. And, you know, having that margin to our, you know, available to us is, is an important thing, um, for us to ensure that, um, we're going to be able to, you know, stay on budget and on time with the project. Given the project costs, I also wanted to, uh, break down a little bit of the, the project funding for you here. Um, you did hear earlier this year that the province announced another round of that construction subsidy top-up, which was, um, very, very welcome. And, um, so how this breaks down for us today, um, by the time we get to twenty twenty-seven, we'll have, we'll I guess the right way to say this is, as of right now, we're into this project for about four point two million dollars with the site works and some of the work that's happened so far. We have been putting away every year, ever since we paid off the mortgage at Lee Manor, we've been putting away money in reserve, that mortgage payment, we just diverted that funds into, into the reserve, so we put money away um, to support this project. In the twenty twenty-four budget, we increased the amount that we were putting away in reserve in recognition that this was going to be, um, an expensive project, so that we went from one point three to one point nine six one million into the reserve this year. Um, there is a provincial develop redevelopment grant that we'll receive at the time of occupancy. So we'll get a lump sum from the province once the project is completely incomplete and we're ready to occupy it. This is part of our development charges, so we are collecting development charges and believe that by the time we get to the end of the project, we should have a little over one point seven million dollars away in DCs that we can use. And then the construction subsidy, the, the top-up money. Remember, we talked about that earlier, where we can take that thirty-five dollars per bed, per day, over twenty-five years. We have the ability to front-end some of that, to take it at a discount right now, and when Mary Lou and her team does the analysis, it's fa- it's to the county's favor to front-end that, so we'll front-end that over ten million dollars to reduce the amount that we need to borrow. But as things stand today, this is what it, it looks like our, our borrowing costs would be, which is about, um, sixty-two million dollars. We have approval from Infrastructure Ontario through, for this year, for ninety-six point seven million dollars. So we should be well covered there. So from a levy impact, we don't know what the interest rate will be from Infrastructure Ontario until the time we actually want to draw the funds. So we're using five percent right now for this example. It could be different by the time we get to the, the time of needing to, uh, to take that loan. Um, but just over four point three million. The annual construction funding prob- money that we'll get from the province each year is about one point two, which leaves us a little over three million dollars to fund the debenture. As I said, at the minute, we've been putting away nearly two million dollars into the levy that could be used to fund this. And, uh, that leaves us with a potential levy increase beginning in twenty twenty-seven of one point one million. I think in discussions, um, I mean, Mary Lou's recommendation for council's consideration, and we'll talk about this again when we, when we get closer to the time, is that we'll spread that money out over the next three budgets, so that we'll increase that one nine six one by like about half a percent in twenty twenty-five, and then again in twenty twenty-six. So that by the time we get to twenty twenty-seven, we're just seeing another small incremental increase to the levy requirements rather than trying to do this all at once. So that's the, the end of the open session. I'm happy to answer any questions right now, or we can go into closed and I'll finish my remarks.
I wonder if it would be best to go into closed session so that everybody has a complete picture of what's being proposed, and then when we come back into open session, there may not, or may, there may or may not be more questions. Madam Clerk, do you want to deal with the other two items in the same session? Yeah, okay. So, um, the motion is the committee of the whole is now going to close session pursuant to section two thirty-nine is, uh, the municipal act is amended to one, a proposed or pending acquisition or dispossessing the land by the municipality, specifically Sidneyham Campus lands. Two, a position plan, procedure, criteria, and instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or in hap- on behalf of the municipality, specifically, again, Sidneyham Campus lands. And three, a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality Rockwood Terrace redevelopment. Would someone care to move that, please? Councillor Body, seconded by councillor Eccles. All those in favor? That is carried. So we will now do what we need to do to go into closed session.